Having six o'clock, I will call the Board of Selectmen June 5th, 2023 meeting to order. I'm going to have Town Administrator Zubrick start with the Town Administrator's report this evening.
The first item in my report tonight is just to summarize what was discussed at the Affordable Housing Trust Meeting. Really, the two big things that were discussed, one of them is optional and one of them is necessary if the town is going to go into affordable housing initiatives or projects. The optional one is the Housing Production Plan. That would assist the town in really trying to come up with a strategy as to which types of housing that the town would prefer and in what sequence. But it's not necessary. The necessary one is called the Affirmative Fair Housing, Marketing, and Resident Selection Plan. That's something that says, okay, we've got an affordable housing development or initiative, and we're asking people to submit interest in it. And there can be a certain level of preference for people from Essex, or veterans, or whatever it is that the Affordable Housing Trust decides is a priority. But it's not an unlimited preference. And so I just wanted to point out that at this time, the Affordable Housing Trust is looking those things over, possibly going to have somebody from the industry, a consultant that writes these types of plans, come in at no cost, and just do a little primer on each of these types of plans, and what are the advantages of having one or both.
So Brendan, the production plan is the type, whether you want townhouses, condos?
Do you want rentals, or do you want sale, you know, owned and all of that? And, you know, in what order, in what sequence, how much?
And the selection plan, how high a percentage of any one given?
We're hearing that in a town that is sufficiently diverse, that can be as high as 30%, but Essex is not very diverse. And so it really would come down to having kind of an analysis done as part of the study. Okay, where are you in this spectrum or this continuum? And then that will help set what level of preference could be. Realize that the Housing Trust looked into this, and that even if Essex funded affordable housing with 100% of its own money, let's say that it was all community preservation money, that selection plan still needs to be put together because there are state and federal fair housing laws that require such a thing. You can't just do a project and work that out on the fly. You have to have that selection plan in order to actually move forward.
Yep.
So my understanding with the affordable housing is it's got to be deeded. So when you talk about rental, is that still the whole rental property has to be?
At least that unit. Not the whole, yeah. So there could be a deed restriction on one unit or multiple units on a property. Let's say there were 10, and two were going to be restricted. That happens all the time, actually, when they build new, like a 40B comes in, and let's say 20%, you know? So two out of the 10, actually, when the deed gets put together, two out of the 10 are perpetually restricted, they're identified as Unit A, Unit B, whatever they are. When it comes down to ownership, it's usually, of course, the entire property, because that's normally like a single-family home.
And so what's the penalty for a town like us? I mean, we've got such a small number of properties to begin with. So is there a penalty if we don't join?
There's not a penalty for not having sufficient, in the eyes of the state, affordable housing. It comes down to whether, when a 40B project comes up, which is a project where a developer wants to come in, doesn't have to follow all the zoning, because they're actually putting some units in affordable and the rest of them at market rate. If we had 10% affordable housing out of our whole stock, then the town would not have to abide by the rules of 40B and could say no. I can also tell you that Housing Production Plan, if you have one, it gives a temporary level of, I guess, protection against the 40B for, I think, five years, once you get it approved. So that's one advantage to having that. But again, you don't have to have that. So far in Essex, 40B developers have not come, because they need a place for wastewater, and we do not generally have good enough soils, they're either rocky or clay, to allow them to have a sufficient drain field for the development. And they can't come in and do new construction on our sewer system, because we have limitation. That's limited both by the agreement with Gloucester and by special legislation that allows us to control connections.
Brendan, this is just an aside. When you say, we can say no to a 40B if we meet the state?
10%.
10%, but that's only if they don't meet the zoning and the other things. If they meet those things, then they can do.
Oh, that's right. It wouldn't come in under 40B, it would just come in under development. Now, there is something else that the Housing Trust talked about, just briefly, which is inclusionary zoning. This means if somebody does come in, and they do meet everything to put in a, you know, a 10-unit townhouse development or something like that, the zoning actually requires them to put a certain percentage of that in affordable. Now, that is something completely different. That's the town telling them, even if you meet standards. So there are many possibilities, and I know the chairman here might, I don't know if you have any other comments, but there's so many things to think about that are interrelated. I think it's going to take a while for the trust to really understand which way it wants to go.
And we've met with one visitor so far, and we have others potentially coming, two others coming to try to hold our hands, so to speak, because it is so new and we are just learning as we go, that I think we don't have all the information yet.
The next item is?
Can everybody joining us online, please mute your phones?
I can mute them.
Show us the button, show us.
Next item, the town has both fixed-rate natural gas supply contract and a fixed-rate electricity supply contract. The electricity contract goes into sometime in 2024, excuse me, but the natural gas supply contract is coming up this fall. So I reached out to our current supplier, which is Constellation Energy, and they are the preferred supplier of the MMA, Mass Municipal Association's Mune Energy Program. And we've been using them for years, and will very likely continue with them for the electricity. But they have just announced that they're no longer going to offer new gas supply contracts. So they will, of course, honor our gas supply contract until it ends, but then we need to find another supplier. My understanding that there is that there is a company called Sprague Energy and a company called Direct Energy that both offer municipal fixed-rate natural gas supply contracts. So I just wanted to let the board know that I'm going to be reaching out to both companies to try to start getting some information and some rates. And hopefully, when we get to the fall, we will be looking at a better environment, because if you went right now, you're going to be paying higher prices because of what's going on in the world. And that could happen at any time, even if we stayed with Constellation. Fortunately, over the past years, that hasn't been an issue, it has not been a problem, and we've always been able to renew during a period of relatively lower pricing. This remains to be seen this fall. So I'll be back in touch when I have more information on that. The next item is an update on the Apple Street Roadbed Elevation and Culvert Replacement Project. A lot of things, this is a very fast-moving project with all the permitting that's going on. A lot of things have happened since the board last met. One thing that we had done is we were going through the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Approval Process, or MEPA, with the Massachusetts MEPA Office. There had been a public comment deadline in the MEPA process that was, I believe, through May 23rd. Then, once I spoke with the MEPA Office with respect to getting a potential extension, which we did get, through June 20th, in order to be able to accommodate the comments that were coming in as part of another process, which is the wetlands approval process, a group of abutters have filed for a superseding order of conditions on the original Essex Conservation Commission Order of Conditions. The MEPA Office said, okay, you're going to need a little bit to respond to that. Since then, however, the Mass DEP has indicated that it would be preferable for the town to have the necessary easements already under its belt in order for the superseding order of conditions process to be completed. And we were given the option of putting that process on hold, rather than withdrawing the project, which is much better. And the Mass DEP will be waiting until after November, when the Fall Town Meeting considers the easements again. And if the Fall Town Meeting approves the easements, which may need to be by eminent domain, the Mass DEP will continue its superseding order of conditions review process, will finish it up, and then we will reapply to MEPA. Because MEPA cannot issue a certificate if there's a pending superseding order of conditions. They were willing to give us a minor extension through June 20th, as I mentioned, when they thought it was going to be a relatively quick turnaround. But now, knowing that DEP can't even do anything with it until after Town Meeting meets again, MEPA just said, you're better off just withdrawing without prejudice, which we did, and then just simply reapplying. They're going to keep the file handy, so we don't have to repopulate all of the materials and background items that we filed in the past.
Why can't DEP just issue the superseding order of conditions, whether or not we have the property or not, and then it's null if we don't?
We asked that, and we asked specifically, Town Council made an argument citing case law, but DEP decided, within their legal community, and there are several chief councils for the various regions of DEP within the state, they all were in agreement that DEP cannot issue that superseding order without knowledge of, final knowledge about the easements. And, you know, Town Council did make the argument, but when you're faced with all the regional legal reps saying, no, we disagree, well, there's really not much you can do. They did give us the dice option, though, of just putting the file on hold, so we don't have to withdraw the project.
Right.
Okay.
And MEPA as well.
Well, MEPA, we had to withdraw. They said, we cannot give you an extension beyond.
So they won't keep the file?
They will keep the file, but it's a reapplication, whereas with DEP, it's not a reapplication.
Gotcha.
And, you know, continuing on from a discussion at your last meeting, we are already working with our engineering firm to come up with some visuals that will really help people at Town Meeting in the fall to understand the relatively small areas that we're looking at on large properties for easements, and to help them understand that it's not, these are not areas that people can even access their property through right now unless they're on foot. You can't enter with a vehicle, because you're already in a wetlands buffer zone in most of the cases. So I think if that's put up on the screen, it will give people in town at least a much more informed basis for the vote.
Brendan, has the consultant on this project, has he redelineated the square footage of the easement necessary, and the buffer zones, and the, what do you call it, the area that they have to?
Yeah, in fact, because when we were out on the superseding order of conditions site visit, the reviewer from DEP said, I don't agree with your wetlands line in one particular place. And she said, the wetlands actually come out a little bit farther. But once it was reviewed by our engineer, it turns out that it's even better. We're actually, we're not having to increase the amount of the easement.
We're not, okay.
He's already done all that, he's already reworked what it will need to look like. So...
That's all said.
That's not a problem. It's waiting for the town to determine whether the easements will be obtained. With respect to the RFP, Request for Proposals for Summer Camp and Youth/Adult Enrichment Services, it's not really anything, we have plenty of time on this, right? Because we are in year 10 of a 10-year agreement with the YMCA. They need to get through this summer with the summer camp, and we're talking about an agreement that would start in January or sometime next spring. So I don't really have much to discuss, unless you've had a chance to look at this, and you have questions or comments at this early stage. I'm just trying to give you a sense of what it might look like when we get to that point in time.
I have one comment, I guess, on the types of enrichment programs they might have. There were some listed, and I'm wondering if we should think about ones we don't want.
I think that would be fine, because if the town says, you know, don't come to us, whoever's applying for this, don't come to us with these types of programs, because we don't want them, we want these instead.
Right.
Do you have ideas that you could get me?
Well, I'm thinking, we've had a case with pickleball, and we've had a case with noise across water. So maybe that's something we should consider not allowing, even though it's probably a great spot.
I think, honestly, I think that's the best spot for it.
I agree.
I think as we develop that area, that's exactly where we want to have those things.
I would say, but we need to discuss it. So I just brought, bring it up.
All right, so I'll take a note of that as this discussion continues sometime.
And I guess my only other aspect is whether or not, I mean, we don't want things that conflict with the library's doing. And I don't, you know, you may want to, we may want to look at that.
Yep.
Because we don't want competing things.
Great. And that gives me some things to work on. And, you know, we can just bring it back little by little, until you think you have what we need. What would happen is, there would be a potential vote of the town, either at the Fall Town Meeting, well, yeah, I think the Fall Town Meeting, because you need some time to get ready. If you did it at the Spring Town Meeting, and the summer camp starts in June, that's not really enough. So probably at the Fall Town Meeting, Town Meeting will consider whether or not to allow for another long-term relationship. It was 10 years, now we're looking at five years. And then after that is obtained, oh, did we, I'm trying to think, did we already, we didn't do that yet, right? That was not at the annual?
That wasn't an annual.
I don't think so. I think it's on our list. The five-year.
Five years, it's on our list, right?
No, it was at the...
We may have done it.
We did vote it.
Did we vote it?
We may have done it.
I think I presented it.
Yeah. So I think we did, now that I'm thinking about. So now that you have that, the ability to be five years, the next step is, at some point in time, to do this Request for Proposals.
Right.
And so do we have to do it at a Town Meeting? So like, if we, if this went out and we had to have it backed by?
Town Meeting, no, no. Now that the Town Meeting has given the Selectmen the authority to contract for up to five years, it switches over to the selectments process for the Request for Proposals. But like I said, you can have months on this, because there's no rush, because you're covered right now until the end of this summer.
And the only last question I had was whether or not you've talked to, besides the why, is there other groups out there that may be interested?
Last time we put it out, I don't think anyone else applied. There may be other groups, though. I mean, it's not a foregone conclusion that it's the YMCA.
It was Article 27.
Yeah, so we did already go to the five-year, that was a long Town Meeting. So I had an item on my report regarding what's coming up with the School Committee for Budget Reconsideration, but you also have a seven o'clock appointment tonight, so maybe merge those things. And then I had the preliminary list of Fall Town Meeting topics.
My only question under first here, possible sale of leased land at Robins Island Properties to leaseholders. So we had a discussion, I did a site visit, I brought back the information. We talked about one resident who was interested in purchasing, and there is law that dictates that they get basically first right of refusal, so that it doesn't go out to the public as a bid process. My question was still surrounding that second parcel, that's directly abutting it, and then further, what the process is for making sure that we're looking at fair market value, and that we have comps done on that property.
Right, so we could get in touch with both, Pam, I think there's only two people out there that are leasing, right? And it's for the garage lots. So one person approached us, the other person hasn't said anything, but we could approach the other person. And then, fair market value, we would have to have an appraisal done. And we would bring in an appraiser, just much like what was done in the past when the various properties were sold out at Canoma Point. And so there would be a requirement to have enough money to do that. I wouldn't imagine that it would be more than $5,000 for the pair, but I could get a quote on that.
I mean, obviously, I think it makes sense to start the process now, if we're going to bring this to Fall Town Meeting. Do you have an opinion on whether or not we want to sell these leased parcels? Originally, Peter, have you been out there? You went out and looked, right?
Yes.
So Elva, I don't know if you want to go out, but down on Robins Island Road, when you go down to the very end, there are several houses that sit really close to each other, but directly across the little street, you would call it, it's more like a shared driveway, there are two garage spaces that are in disrepair. I mean, they're pretty much used for storage and kind of falling down. The leaseholders that are leasing these are leasing them, are they year-to-year? Are they annual leases? They're leasing them year-to-year. And the reason that we're only doing one-year leases is because at some point during the whole Canoma Point situation, they thought that it might be an easy way to access the marsh, or potentially turn it into some parking. I went out.
Because the town owns, if you look at the map of, if you go online and you look at the map of Robins Island, the town owns a particular piece that allows people to go all the way back out to the water on Robins Island.
On the other side of the?
Yeah, on the other side of the street from the garages. And so the thought was, when Robins Island properties were sold, or most of them were sold, the town kept this way out there and did the one-year leases, because let's say it was some popular thing that everyone wanted to go out there, then you'd want to provide parking. So far, I haven't heard, and that happened in 27, no, that's the north, happened back in Robins Island, 2014, 15?
10 years ago, almost, yeah.
I haven't heard of any major interest in anyone not being able to park and walk out to this particular thing.
And you would have to haul, if you were going to kayak from this particular location, which was the conversation back then, you would have to haul your kayak pretty far across the marsh to actually get out there.
Yeah.
I don't see it being.
It doesn't, it's not conducive to a parking lot, anyway, either one of those parcels.
But if somebody bought both of the parcels, would they be able to build?
They're already built on.
They're built on, they're garages, that they would just renovate. But they're not a buildable lot.
No, you could sell it with a deed restriction that said it will remain. And you could do the appraisal to see what the value is, where, you know, all that would be allowed is an outbuilding or a replacement of the outbuilding in kind. But the reason why that was all put aside is because at the time the town sold, really, nobody knew whether there would be interest in it or not. But there really hasn't been.
No.
And you would never have enough frontage or side lots to meet setbacks to actually get a building permit to make it habitable. So they're strictly storage.
So it's something, I can at least get a quote on what it would cost to get the appraisal.
Are you finished, Ruth?
I am.
I think that Tier Two, we should move the special legislation to cap senior taxes up into Tier One. I think that's important, and I have some thoughts on that, that I can talk about when we talk about the school budget, that may be relevant to even this year's school budget. So if that's something that we want to put up there, and there is precedent-set legislation that has been filed by various communities to do that, so we'll put that up in the first tier.
Yeah, and if the board's in favor of that, that would generally involve a vote of the Town Meeting to authorize the Selectmen to petition the legislature for whatever the special legislation would be. And then it goes through the legislature, and it can take up to a year, depending on how controversial it is. But if there are a lot of things that are out there that are already similar, it moves more quickly than if something's new and novel to the legislature.
Elva, do you have anything on the fall?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Brendan. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $243,370.67.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the General Laws, the contracts and amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 6123 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's May 18th, May 22nd, May 25th, open meeting in May 25th executive session.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion to vote to accept the letter of resignation from Alva Ingaharo as representative to the North Shore Agricultural and Technical School.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to ratify the Town Administrator's sign-off on building permit application to replace windows and one door on an enclosed porch at 130 Canoma Point Road. And I'm going to read a motion on this. I, Ruth Arperine, move that the Board of Selectmen, in its capacity as Canoma Point Commissioners, approve 130 Canoma Point LLC's care of Dan Meyer, request to replace windows and one door on an enclosed porch at 130 Canoma Point Road, MAP 108, Lot 65, subject to all terms and conditions of the land lease for said premises, including but not limited to Articles 5 and 9.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify and sign a Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B transfer in the amount of $9,000 from the Building Inspector Clerical Budget to General Legal.
Brendan, can you explain, there's three or four of these.
Yep, so on this first one, we've had legal expenses that have exceeded the legal budget. This is the first year where the Finance Committee did not provide us with, it's either the first or the second year, provide us with a separate wastewater legal budget and a separate Canoma Point legal budget. Instead, it's just one general budget. And so there's $10,000 that we usually had access to, that we no longer have access to. And depending on the year, and depending on what happens, it may or may not be enough. And at this point, it's not enough. So there's money, extra money in the clerical budget of the Building Inspector, because when we were setting up the new online permitting software, we thought that the clerk for the Building Inspector would have to spend a lot more time than she actually has to, to help manage the backend of the system. So the money's there. And in the last quarter of the fiscal year, under this law that's been quoted, you're allowed to move money from any budget to any other budget with the permission of the Finance Committee. And they've already met on all of these, and they've approved all of these.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify and sign a Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B transfer in the amount of $8,000 from the Part-Time Planner Budget to General Legal.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify and sign a Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B transfer in the amount of $2,000 from the Appeals Board Expense Budget to the Appeals Board Clerical Budget.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pam, did we get back things from Finance to sign those? But you're going to pass them? You have them, okay. Thanks.
I'm going to table the next item, which is regarding data. I'm still waiting for information. I will, we don't need to take a motion on this. I'm going to circulate and sign this, I'll entertain a motion to sign the Small Business Week in Person of the Year proclamation to be presented Monday, June 12, 23. the Year proclamation to be presented Monday, June 12, 23, at Woodman's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify the town administrator's signature on a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of $10,000 to the General Legal Budget.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify the town administrator's signature on a line item transfer request in the amount of $3,500 from blanket insurance to the Town Hall Elevator Inspection Maintenance Budget.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We received an email from a student at MERSD requesting that we install bike racks at school bus stops. Did everyone have a chance to read the email? So was there more information forthcoming with that email, as far as how many bike racks, where the bus stops are, whether the parcels that they would sit is municipally owned, who will take-
Certainly, we could ask the student to provide all of that, but no, they, at this point, they were just saying, is the concept something that the selectmen would support?
Yeah, I think depending on the location, we certainly would.
But there's a couple of things. First of all, although the bus stops have been in a similar place for many years, they're not guaranteed to stay there. If one neighborhood lose, you know, doesn't have children in the school system, the school bus stop may change. So that's a concern of mine. I did look at the number of bus stops that we're talking, it's pretty high. And, you know, if we're just talking Essex, that would be, you know, of course, a lesser number than Manchester, Essex. And also, I, some of the things that I looked at was, you know, so you put in a bike rack, I've seen articles out there where people are stealing the bike racks, they're just cutting them and turning them, you know, getting funds for them. So I think we do need to do a little bit more due diligence to see whether or not, you know, if they can ride 15 minutes to the bus stop, can they ride another five minutes to the school, or to the, you know, an area where it's popular?
Consolidate, consolidate the rack location.
Yeah, consolidate them so that they're near a bus stop, but also, you know, because I think this is great. I think it's great for, you know, a student of that age to be willing to put this information in the public and ask for it, but we really do need to do some due diligence as to where.
Right, and if you get past that, then you need to get funding for it.
Funding, correct. And my concern is, you know, like, if you look at even just, I
live on Martin Street, I think there's four or five bus stops-
Hang on a second, Alva. Lindsay, if you guys want to take the conversation in the hallway, it would just be easier, because we can hear that coming up this way.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
You know what I mean, like, this, the four or five bus stops on Martin Street, so
would you need one at every bus stop, or, like I said, would it be better to consolidate and say, here, here's the five places in town, or here's the three places in town? That would be ideal.
And it might be prudent to start out with 1, 2, 3, 4, and see how well they're used.
Well, should I ask the student to come up with three to five recommendations? Because, I mean, there's no funding for this until the fall, if it's going to happen, right? If the town's going to fund it.
Well, I think we need to be equitable in not having a student come up with three or five locations. What I'd like to see is how many bus stops we have overall, because if we only have six bus stops, why would we stop at five? So I would like to see, is the expectation that the bikes racks would go into both Manchester and Essex, how many bus stops do we have in total? At these particular bus stops, is it municipally-owned land, so that we're not now asking for easements to put it on private property?
Or state property.
Or state property. And then we need to talk about just the maintenance, the expectation of the Department of Public Works and how they'll be maintained, will they be removed in the winter months, as soon as the first snowfall? So just a little bit more clarity, but that's where I would start.
But you're asking the student to do that, right? Because isn't that part of the, isn't that the project?
It's a project.
Right, so it's not us doing-
So I think they probably have this information.
Right, they need to go and find that.
Right.
And the only thing is, is he, I mean, he gave his, you know, he didn't give his exact bus stop location, so, or where he lived, to be able to say, if he's going left to one, to his bus stop, would a bus stop, I mean, would a bike rack to the right be a better place? You know, that's the type of thing, where do you put something in between two bus stops, so that you can support more?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll get back to the student and give you more information later.
Excellent. So one-day license for-
One just thing, I'm sorry, just to let you know, each year, the bus stops are on the Manchester, Essex website. It lists all of the addresses, where it's located, what street corners, so that's where I looked and saw, oh, jeez, there's a whole bunch of them.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Every hundred yards.
Yeah.
When you're following the bus.
I will entertain a motion to approve a one-day license for the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce, Essex River Day, for use on Saturday, June 17, 2023, with a rain date of 6/18/23, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 9:00 PM, within the confines of Shepherd Memorial Park, one local band, Brick House, one to two food trucks, and children's games by Ipswich YMCA, amplified music, and Essex radio announcements.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion for the, to approve the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce Essex Clam Fest for use on Saturday, October 21, 2023, rain date 10/22/23, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM, within the confines of Shepherd Memorial Park, amplified music by local bands, and Essex radio announcements.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve- Bear with me. I'm going to take these one at a time. I was going to do them as a whole one, but I have a question on the second one. I will entertain a motion to approve a one-day wine and malt license for the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce Essex River Day for use on Saturday, June 17, 2023, rain date 6/18/23, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 9:00 PM, within the confines of Shepherd Memorial Park.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pam, on the second one-day wine and malt, I see that this is the one from Mayflower, and her receiving her license at our last meeting was contingent on her getting a DBA license through the town clerk's office. Has that-
I already heard that.
She does, perfect. So I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day wine and malt for Helen's Bottle Shop, Alexis Harwood, for use on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM, within the confines of Mayflower Confections, 162 Main Street, contingent upon receipt of a management and security plan and a map.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve a one-day wine and malt for the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce Essex Clam Fest for use on Saturday, October 21, 2023, with a rain date of 10/22/23, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM, within the confines of Shepherd Memorial Park, contingent upon receipt of a $25 fee, management, security plan, and a map.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on our agenda is, we have some appointments. In the first section of appointments, at the last meeting, we voted to approve, to reappoint all of the Strategic Planning Committee members for one year, and my apologies, I had a draft copy of the agenda, and some of the names were in italics, so we voted to approve all of them. And in fact, there were four that did not wish to be reappointed, so I need to take a motion to reappoint the Strategic Planning Committee members, less the ones that say cancel beside them, because they do not wish to be reappointed. And I'm going to actually ask Peter if you want to make that motion, less those, because I'm on this.
Sure, I have a question. Is this a full committee with the ones canceled out, or are there going to be four?
Since it's an ad hoc committee, the number can vary, and I don't anticipate them meeting very frequently, since they just completed the renewal, the revision of the strategic plan for the next five years.
Okay.
Certainly, we can start to look for replacements. I believe they had 12 or 13 at the height of it, and this-
So Ruth, do you want me to have the motion by individuals, or do you want me to just as shown?
So honestly, Peter, if you want to just do all of these licenses from appointments all the way through, the end of page four, you can take them all, and I can do the reminders.
Okay. So, well, I mean, with the Strategic Planning Committee, how do you want me to do it, just as shown?
Just as shown.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to vote to cancel or confirm the following Strategic Planning Committee for one year. I'll do them one by one, I guess.
You could just say as listed.
Just as listed.
As listed, yeah, as listed.
And then you need to move it, because I'm not going to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain.
I will entertain a motion to vote the following appointments and sign the appointment cards for Board of Public Works, CATA Representative, Community Preservation Committee, Observation Commission, Emergency Management Director, Essex Cultural Council, Finance Committee, Harbor Master Assistant, North Shore Agricultural Technical School, Open Space Committee, and REPC Emergency Response Coordinator, as listed.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that it all? Yeah.
That's everything. So we do have two reminders. On Monday, June 12, 2023, there is the Small Business Person Award Dinner from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Woodman's. That's where the proclamation will be presented, and we do, we stand up, we read the proclamation, shake the hand of the Small Business Person of the Year, and we can stay and socialize or leave. So this is where I ask if anybody has any commitments, if they would like to do the award presentation or not. And this is one of the times where if all of us want to go, we can all go, or one of us can go, however we'd like to do that.
Yeah, I was asked last night if I was going to be there, so I will go. I don't know if somebody else wants to present, that's fine.
And I'll look at my schedule and see if I can go. I haven't looked yet.
Okay.
Then I had two things-
One more reminder. The next Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, June 26, 2023, at 6:00 PM, third floor auditorium of the Town Hall.
Yep, and that's the next regular meeting. There's a special meeting on the 13th. Two things came in just today that I don't want to go to wait two weeks on. We had a resident who indicated that she would like to work with volunteers out at Canoma Point to relandscape the beds that are in front of the small park out there. They're overgrown, and it's time to refresh things. She's in the landscaping and flower business. She's not looking for any recognition or a sign, she just feels like she wants to help in that way. So do you have any problem with that occurring?
No.
No.
Is it, is she a business or just a resident?
She's a business.
And do we worry about requesting a certificate of liability to make sure that she's-
No, because she's doing it, she happens to be in that field, but she's doing it as, just as a volunteer, which we have coverage for volunteers.
Okay, perfect.
Ruth, I have a 5:00 meeting on the 12th.
Okay.
In Duba Report.
So, Alva, we'll plan on attending, and if something comes up, we can let each other know on that.
And then I had another student approach today with a suggestion about a sporting goods swap. So the student was saying that sometimes students only try out a sport, and maybe they only go in for one season, and it can get expensive for parents. So the student was saying, would the Town Halls in Manchester and Essex be willing to be kind of a repository for things that are donated, store them in a certain place until the organizers display them for people who may be interested? So the thought was, on a regular basis, these things are collected in the foyer. The, some student or group of students would have to come and make sure that it gets stored down in the basement on a regular basis. Then, whether it's one event or multiple events, perhaps up here on the third floor, the students would move all the gear up, allow people to go through, and then dispose of anything that didn't go. Now, again, it's the type of thing that the student would have to actually work all of this out, but I suspecting that they're near the end of their year, I didn't want to go another two weeks with it. So is that anything the board has an issue with?
Do we have the space?
Yeah, that's what my concern would be, the space.
We do have the space.
And the liability, in case it floods or anything like that, is it, do we just throw it out, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's an issue with that. It's a matter of whether or not, and the person hasn't gotten back to me yet, whether or not the student can actually organize and coordinate enough people to pull this thing off, because we don't have anyone that would be doing that. It would be a student-led.
And it would occur in Town Hall?
That's right.
The sale or-
It's not a sale, it's not a sale, yep. It's just, here are all the things we collected, and if you have a child that's going to try out soccer, and you needed, you know, ankle pads or whatever, shin pads.
I envision it happening similar to the coat drive that Erin does through the Board of Health in the winter, when she collects boots and coats at the spaghetti supper, and then she puts them all up here.
Yeah, but for me, it's just a matter of, are they, you know, are they depositing it here so they don't have to store it at their house, and then we, you know, some of them-
Well, no, there'd be a finite agreement with the town, and after their last event, if they didn't have items that went, they would have to go and dispose of the items.
That's my only concern. I don't want us, I mean, we'd all love to have the swap shop back, but-
Yeah, this is only for sporting goods. It would be very defined, and it would be, at the end, it all goes, whether it's someone took it or they took it back. Again, the student would have to determine whether they have the coordination and people power to actually have this, but-
So it would be something fairly soon. It wouldn't be like an annual thing where you store the stuff up and collect it over a year, and then-
I don't, we're not equipped to do that anyway, right. So, I mean, I'll get more information from the student, but today, I just got the first email on it, and said that I would at least try to bring it up.
I think it's a great idea. Okay, so it's 6:47, we have 13 minutes until we go into our meeting with the Finance Committee. The Board of Selectmen is just going to continue signing paperwork, so feel free to talk amongst yourselves, and give us a few minutes to sign.
Do you want to sign them while I do that?
Did we do this last week?
[laughing]
I'm sorry, Brendan, the 13th of June, you said as a special?
That's someone in the morning, yeah. That's the Public Works.
It's to sign the SRF stuff. It shouldn't take long at all.
It's also going to be a public hearing for brewery.
Right.
A what? What is it?
So it's also the public hearing for the brewery, because the brewery would like to use the patio area that is currently not allowed to be used under their permanent license.
Yep.
And it would be relatively quick, depending on whether the board is interested in it, but the board can, at a public hearing, vote to authorize temporary use of that space and say, look, as of whatever, September 30, it goes, it reverts back to what's on the license.
Yeah.
But he's trying to get the summer out of it, using one-day licenses, and, yeah.
You know, I mean.
So it's roughly 100, this is what he is exempting from, the revised budget, the late bus, the-
Okay, there was some for Peter and Alva.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
6:49, I'm going to call a recess.
Need to have a stamp made.
Yeah, well, you see my signature. Yeah, well, you see my signature. So John Felice is back. That's interesting.
What's that?
John Felice is back.
He's back. That's who Jones Field. He wants it.
Yeah. Wasn't even a year ago.
Right.
Whose signature is that?
Oh my God. What is this? Oh, it's one of the finance.
It's worse than mine.
I would guess it's for Mike Flynn or something.
That's a lot of work for illegible. No, there's no Y in there. Somebody with a Y in their first name, or G or something. Nothing in that.
Yeah. I don't know.
This is just something to balance money in the Apple Street project, where we now have delays on certain things. You have to move some money, I'll show you, from one fiscal year.
This looks like a plan.
Visually, it's the, it's the MVP grant. We have to move a little bit of money, extra money, from FY '23 into FY '24, because the things that we were going to have done by now have been delayed, and so we're not going to spend money on it in time, so we have to have an official move into the new fiscal year.
Okay.
Did Michelle say that's going to affect anything, the delay in the SOC and the MIPA stuff? Is that going to affect?
The MVP? No, they're moving this, they're moving the money for us, for the things that we would have been spending on right now, they're moving it into FY '24.
Oh, okay, great.
So we're going to be fine.
So are we going to ratify this if it's?
You don't even need to.
We don't need to.
Just administrative. You approve this grant.
Okay, perfect.
It requires your signature to view it.
Yours?
You don't have a quorum.
I'm sorry, 13th, 8:00 AM. Did I say yes to that?
Yes, you did. I remember. You wanted eight. It was eight or 8:30.
That's right.
I prefer seven.
Look, I have it in there already.
Where is that? Is that here or down there?
Here.
Down, I believe, second floor stage.
I don't know that my dog is going to approve all these 8:00 meetings. I just want you to know.
6:59, the recess is over. I'm going to ask for people in the room to stop chatting, and anybody that's joined us online, if you could just make sure that your phone is muted, that would be great. I'm going to ask Jody Harris to join us at the table at a microphone. Jody, when you speak, you need to be like three inches away from the microphone for the cameras to pick it up. So we, at 7:00, we are meeting with the Finance Committee to discuss their recommendations as they pertain to the Manchester Essex Regional School District operating in capital budgets for fiscal year '24 and long-term recommendations. Chairman Buttrick was unable to be with us this evening and has asked Jody Harris to present in his absence. So, Jody, I'm going to hand the floor over to you. Will you actually come around the table and just, you don't have to sit beside Alva, but so that the cameras can pick you up?
You can sit beside me.
We could, we have plenty of room. So the Finance Committee met last week to discuss the, our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for the Manchester Essex School District's budget. I had attended the Manchester Board of Selectmen and FinCom joint meeting, which was held just prior to the school committee's public hearing on 5/23, and Chairman Perin was also there. What we heard there was that, after discussion, that both boards voted to support a compromise budget and to, and they actually made that recommendation on the floor that night for the school committee, at the school committee meeting during the hearing. We discussed a full budget, and we discussed the compromise budget at the FinCom, and we went around the table and discussed pros and cons of why we supported what we supported. And after an hour or so, we had a six-to-one vote for the compromise budget as presented by the school committee, using their reserves to close the gap. We did not feel that any conditions should be put on that. The, one of the conditions was that Essex would agree to fund the fields. I think that Essex, we felt strongly that Essex intended to bring that forward at our Fall Town meeting, and that we were looking to pay for the fields from free cash, but we don't actually vote on capital projects and expend our free cash until our free cash is certified before Fall Town meeting, and we also can't predict what the voters will vote for, but we fully intend to bring that forward and are hoping that that project goes forward for both fields, and then we would be able to bring that forward to Fall Town meeting. The second condition was regarding mediation surrounding, going forward, developing and working with both member towns and the school committee regarding the budget for the next year. And I think mediation is a term that we have to be careful about, because we can't agree to anything in mediation without having a town meeting vote to support whatever was agreed on in mediation. We could call it marriage counseling or something other than that, but we were looking to simply support the compromise budget with the, the school using their reserves to bridge the gap.
Thank you. Peter, do you have any questions?
There was a recommend, well, no, I don't have questions on that, on your comments.
Alva, do you have questions on Jody's comments, or what you brought back from the Finance Committee?
So the only, the only thing that I had was in regards to that mediation or marriage counseling type of thing, is that, you know, who decides who's on it? I think we have very strong, passionate people on both sides, and I don't know though anything would get done if we had those same strong people on both sides. So having some type of solution where, you know, who's on it is decided some way, I don't know. I just feel like it can't be the same strong, passionate people that are on each, each side right now.
I think that, a couple of things that Ben summarized after we voted is that we do need to have some, some type of facilitation on the budget process. I think we would want to review the apportionment formula, you know, these were all things to be considered. We would like to take another look at the regional agreement. I don't, I don't like the word "open" the regional agreement. I don't, I don't love the, the term "cracking open the regional agreement," but I think it would behoove everybody to actually do some studying of the regional agreement and, and maybe talk about it and ask questions with our, our partner town. We discussed the potential of an oper, an operational audit or review, which is something that other regional school districts have, as a, as a piece in their actual regional agreement. We do not have that, but an operational review hasn't happened since the beginning of the district, to my understanding. And then we just, we're hoping for adhering, the, the district to adhere to the reporting from the agreement as in the annual report, which hasn't been received in some time, and other general reporting, I think that would need to be fleshed out. I think we also really want to work together with our town partner and hear the same things at the same time, so maybe some joint meetings between the Board of Selectmen and the FinComs in both Manchester and Essex could help smooth out the process.
Thank you, Jody. Anything else? Do you have any questions? No?
I have comments.
Okay, now's time for comments. I'm ready for comments.
So I am against any cuts to the budget. I think, except for ones that are non-scholastic, and I think some of those could be found, maybe the late bus and a few other things that were identified, but I think that a lot of families moved to Essex and Manchester for the, the school system. I think as we degrade the school system by reducing some of the programs and products that the students have, we're going to start to lose incentive for teachers to be there, and it'll continue to degrade. I'm thinking that, for those of you who were here earlier when I recommended that we do a tax cap, look at a, a tax cap for financially challenged elderly, whatever, however you want to do that, that we go forward with that, and if we're diligent and efficient, we can probably do something in that regard that would be in place before next year's budget, which would allow us to maybe, and you've all heard this a million times before, that if we use reserves from the three entities, that we could maybe end this cycle that we're in now, and it would be a leap of good faith, because the Town of Essex would have to pass this legislation at both town meeting and at, and at the ballot box, as well as the legislature approving it, but that has been done. We're not breaking any ground. It's a five-year-old or more, I guess, tool that could be used, and the legislature is familiar with it. Different towns have done different things. I think it's something that we really need to investigate prior to town meeting, the Fall Town meeting, when that would be voted in, but if we could do something, now we have a plan for moving forward, where we're not looking at constant overrides, we're looking at a cap that keeps, limits the amount of taxes that those who qualify can, can meet or will meet, and that others potentially would have to pay, pick up the slack. I'm not sure there would be a whole lot more, or a potential would be coming from an overlay, but it would reduce the burden on those that can least afford the increases. I think that with that in mind, and the leap of faith, maybe the, the school district would be willing to pay a greater than its fair share, Essex and Manchester paying somewhat less, and get us through this year at the full budget amount, and going forward, we would apportion it the way it should be without having to do overrides.
Thank you. Alva, do you have any comments?
No.
So I've been watching the process myself, attending the meetings. I don't say much. I just listen, and I was, clearly we had an election, and 507 people voted against the override, so I support that. I support the compromise budget. I think the school committee did a good job trying to create a compromise budget. I think that the full cuts package is drastic. I don't think anybody wants to see that. I did attend the budget workshop that was had this afternoon, and there was one thing at the very end of the meeting that alarmed me a little bit. at the very end of the meeting that alarmed me a little bit. And I don't know what, you know, I'm just speaking about the, the conversation that was had and it was just a mini snippet. But I think Pam said, "I don't recommend this, but we could use all reserves to bridge this gap of $781,000." And my little ears went up because I was like, "Oh, my God, that's such a bad idea." So although it would get us to where we need to be, which means no cuts, it puts the district back in a bad position. It puts the town in a worse position because it's the same kicking the can down the road that we keep talking about. So if they're going to use $781,000 of reserves, you know, we keep doubling those numbers. So now we're at, whatever it is, $1.5 million next year of this gap that we can't fix. So I'm just saying from that point of view, I don't, there weren't a lot of people in attendance today, but I, I hope that the school committee realizes that that is just a, I hope they hear that that's a terrible idea from my point of view. I do agree with the compromise budget. I appreciate that that actually has been presented. And I also agree personally that the fields conversation, the whole reason that we couldn't have that at the beginning of the year for annual town meeting was simply because we don't have the certified free cash and that that couldn't be a conversation then. It can't be a conversation now because it, then we're just going to be looking for $400,000 more on top of the 289 four that we're looking for beyond our excess capacity because we're using all of our excess, excess capacity at this point to get to where we could to fund Article Four. And then like the FinCom discussion was had, the, the issue with mediation, if we, mediation can't be had because of the town meeting, we are governed by town meeting. And if it's called counseling and we just want to make sure that all parties are on the same page and that everyone is getting along in the sandbox, that's, I'm okay with that. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'm going to make a motion. No? Alva, anything at this point?
No. The only comment I wanted to ask is, so regardless of what, whatever's going to be presented, I believe it's tomorrow night, if it came in with the full budget, we still have to go to town meeting, we still have to have a town vote, correct? Those would have to be planned once tomorrow is done? Is that how it works?
That's actually what I was going to comment on, but I can, the Selectmen have a meeting on 13th, so it could still be added to the agenda after you know what the school committee votes.
Sure.
And that could be to have a special town meeting, a special election, or if it comes in at Article Four, not necessarily do anything at all.
Obviously, from the standpoint of the school district and committee, the sooner the better. I mean, we're not trying to delay taking, you, we, we all want this in the rearview mirror. We just want to make sure that it's something that the towns can afford. I'm going to ask the board, do you want to have public comment before we vote on this? Or do you, I mean,
I think so.
You want public comment before we take a vote? Sure. So, anybody that's on the line wishing to make public comment, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Please state your name and your address and then I'm going to have you speak. Okay. Anybody in the room that would like to make public comment? Teresa, when you speak into the microphone, if you can do your name and address and please stay about three or four inches away from the microphone so the audio picks you up.
Testing.
Perfect.
Thank you. Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street, also chairperson for the school committee. So first I just want to thank you for the report out and for the deliberation. That, that makes a lot of sense. As you said, we actually have had two workshops since the Finance Committee meeting last Wednesday so that our committee could really just work through all of this because it was a lot to take in over the past month and also the, the, what we're calling the compromise budget as presented by Pam at the public hearing. There's also really other, I mean, we have a school committee member who also has presented a separate version of a compromise budget. So we really needed to work through some of those things before tomorrow night so that we can have an effective deliberation. So I'm grateful for the people who were able to come and pay attention to that. So thank you for that. The, just to give you some context of where, where we are and where we're sort of headed, the main concern coming out of these has primarily been exactly what you said is, does this actually get to solving a bigger problem? And as we all know, none of these specific solutions really does, right? But we do think that there's an opportunity here to take, I think to take Jake's words, the chance to pick the option that sets us up the best for doing that work down the line. And I do think, I'm not known for my optimism, but I do think we have enough interest from the public, from the boards, from, from both towns, from everyone right now for us to be set up to do that at this time. So that could be one, one very good outcome from this. We have had, particularly by email, but also in-person calls, everything else, we have had overwhelming support for that original budget. I am going to break down the emails, the emails, information that we've received tomorrow at the meeting, just so that everybody knows. And I will include what came in before that public hearing versus post because once that compromise option was on the table, you know, that certainly changes things for a lot of people. But the, the main concern, like I said, is setting up, setting us up for what is going to work best to get to a bigger solution here. So our task tomorrow is as we contemplate that, you know, do we take another bite at the apple, so to speak, as has been the overwhelming support, recognizing that we, we have a lot of support for that original budget, official and unofficial, but we also really have to wrestle with what will pass. That, the issue right now is we need stability for the district before we start hemorrhaging teachers. We need to get stability to move forward. I know, I know you guys understand that. So really, we're going to have to discuss whether or not we wish to entertain that idea, either in its full amount or in a reduced fashion as some sort of compromise, whether that's something we're interested in doing. Or do we take the more extreme, like you said, idea of pulling off the Band-Aid? I think part of our goal, my goal for tonight really is to have heard what you guys are bringing to the table in terms of conversation, what came from last Wednesday and especially from tonight, to help us understand as a committee what Essex, A, is able to bear for this year, but also moving forward, right? And I know you can't commit to that right now, of course. But the, the way the conversation has gone with Jody's report out and with Peter's comments and ideas already, does, does lend itself well to being able to say, "Look, we're already looking at solutions." So yes, we have a process we're going to have to go through together to come to some common understanding about how we're going to do all of this, but we already have Essex looking for solutions. Because that's one thing that keeps coming up is, okay, well, what kind of assurances do we have that anything's going to be different for Essex? Not because they don't want to, but because they can't. And so we're already hearing some of that tonight and I really appreciate that. So moving forward, we are going to need to have a process. I want to, I think, I forget, it might have been Ruth who said, or maybe Jody, the term mediation is a really specific term and we probably should use facilitated rather than mediated because that is a very specific situation there. We'll see how it goes. We need a process. We may need assistance, but the conversation tonight regarding a willingness to bring forth the field funding gives us a little bit of ability to, to work on that section of it, you know, to understand where our reserves are, are, are going to be and helps us have the ability to feel more confident in a compromise solution, whatever that may be. So I just want to thank you all for the open and honest conversation, but also I'm definitely, I'm experiencing and feeling a spirit of collaboration moving forward. I'm feeling it on the part of the school committee as well, a real interest in wanting to do that and just maybe needing a little bit to get over the line and I'm hearing that tonight. So I hope that that resonates with the rest of the committee as well. We have to make this decision tomorrow. Our 30 days are up on, on the eighth, so.
I just have one question, comment. I received a lot of emails that was to the, you know, save our school support, fully funded. I don't, I would like to hear not just numbers, but actually that they either are Manchester, Essex, or completely out of the district because I have a whole bunch from Pennsylvania, from New York.
I've got that all broken down.
Good. Thank you.
So I, I also have a comment, well, kind of a comment. While I lay in bed at night asleep, not sleeping for many weeks, as I'm sure you have not either, Teresa, you know, one of the things that dawned on me, I said, "How did we get here?" Because you want to always figure out how you got here. And the thing that this epiphany I had was, you know, I keep saying this is like deja vu. For the last four years, we say, "Let's just pass the budget so we can work on the problem and we need to, you know, deal with this." And it dawned on me, the problem is that we never identified what the problem was or who was in charge of solving it. And I think that's the big issue. I think that the town felt like the school committee was going, or the district was going to solve it. And I think the school committee and the district thought the town was going to solve it and here we are. We're, you know, up the creek without a paddle, so to speak. And I think that that's what I would like to see come out of this, is an actual commitment for, maybe not who's going to solve it, but how we're going to solve it, how we're going to work together. And we are all elected officials that are here to represent 3,675 people. So they're, they don't all have voices. I mean, we also have received the same emails,
Right.
or, you know, thereabouts. And the ones that are brave enough to speak have spoken, but we represent all of them and we have to do our best to make sure that we're, we're addressing all of those concerns. But I think that for me, that's the most important thing, is what is our path forward and how do we work together? So that's my only comment coming out of this. It doesn't solve anything other than just a, a comment, but.
May I respond?
Anything else for Teresa?
May I respond?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just so you know, that's, that's the same thing that our committee has been hung up on as well as, okay, but what are we going to do? And how are we going to do it? So I know that some of us have been putting our minds to that. I think tomorrow night, part of the presentation will be a path forward. It doesn't need to be the path forward, but at least to have a starting point. Here's what we can do because I think our committee's going to have a hard time setting aside that to do the work of tomorrow night if we don't at least have something mapped out of here's how this could go so that we can at least envision something there and so that it will be part of tomorrow night, just so you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have any other comments before?
I will just take one moment to thank you, not for the budget, but for your open and willing engagement with the request from the student regarding the bike racks and for taking it very seriously and discussing it in that way. I just came from the eighth grade civics fair, which was held tonight. There are a number of really great projects that are going on and I know at the school committee level, we receive a number of emails with requests for things to do and it's really heartening to see our town board taking them seriously and, and looking at them in a serious way. So thank you for that.
Always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with public comment? Tom? Oh, Lindsay, sorry. You'll be next.
The only thing I'd like to say is, I think there's a lot of predictability. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom DeMayo, 35 Water Street. I think there's a lot of predictability to this and this is a really long-term trend. It started in 2013. You have the counts for the student body, the student enrollment year on year. You can project this out for the next three or four years with a lot of accuracy. So this is not just this year, you've got a long-term trend here. And I think that when you just made that comment, who's supposed to fix this? It just doesn't feel like either side's willing to talk about the constraints that the other side is going to put on them. There's no way that the school system can shrink like this over time without some hard choices about curriculum. It's just not possible. And conversely, the town has, you know, certain set of expectations it has to meet with the school system. But, you know, there hasn't been, I, I think when I hear all the discussions, it's all about where the, the maximum pain point for revenue is. It's not about a philosophy of how these long-term trends are going to be dealt with three, four, or five years out. I mean, it's not really as hard as you're making it out to be. You're just not asking the questions. You're just basically settling on where you can get through this this year. I haven't heard anything about next year or the year after and I haven't heard anybody really get to the core of it, which is how, how much can the system contract and still maintain what it, what it is? And what are the underlying principles of that? Like, how much is breadth of curriculum critical to the qualitative view of the school system? Negotiate it, come to some sort of an agreement long-term about it and, and realize, I think you could, you'll be able to see three, four, or five years out where things are going. It's not that hard mathematically. And I just don't, I just think that it's just year on year getting through it. Ask the hard stuff and ask each other to, to, hey, how are we going to get from point A to point B? Because your, the revenue streams of the town are predictable. The, the number of children are predictable. They're easy enough things to see and, and nobody's getting to, to the point where, all right, how, how are we going to bring these, you know, these two curves together? They're not, they're pretty far apart. They're just, I just don't see any willingness to, to grapple with it. So from my point of view, I, you know, I just think, you know, maybe there's a lot of math being done behind the scenes, but I, I don't think any of it's getting to the voters. Numerically, this should be, you know, there's a, a range of things that can happen and that's it. And I just don't, I, I haven't heard anybody get to that point where we're within those two, those two bounds. And I'd like to see it.
Thank you, Mr. DeMayo. I'm going to comment on that just because I do attend to the meetings and I am silent, but I, I do want to say that there are several people in this room that would tell you that I do ask a lot of those hard questions, which does not make a lot of friends for me. And the school committee has actually been great about asking some of those questions. Just at the workshop earlier today, one of the school committee members said, "We need to work with the town of Essex and say, what can you afford? What is the budget, so to speak? How do we take the program and make it work into what is affordable by the town?" Another school committee member is a CFO and said, you know, "Doing projections and working out long-term financial strategies is an easy thing to do. As long as we have the data, we can do this." So I think that everyone, I think it's unfair to say that they're not, that we're not asking tough questions or not doing that work. At the Finance Committee last week, they were talking about three-year projections so that we could provide to the school committee what the town can afford, which direction we're going to go, what our new growth looks like, what those numbers are. I've asked the questions of our town accountant. I know that our new growth is somewhere between 70 and 140,000 a year. So it's, it's an unfair statement to say. I think we are all taking a really hard look and asking a lot of tough questions. I know there's a lot of work to be done and I don't disagree with a lot of what you said, but we're not going to solve it in this room tonight. We do need to pass a budget and I think that we're all hearing the same thing. Those tough questions start the minute that budget passes. And I don't think anybody at this table is going to let that slide through the cracks after the statement I made, just made. Who's in charge? Who's going to take charge? I will. If no one else wants to, I will call Teresa every day of the week until we solve this problem. Literally. So, yeah.
And I want to just mention on the predictability, yes, it's great, but I was on the school committee in 2008 when the market crashed, multiple families of seven kids moved in and all of a sudden we went boom. So you, you can't even predict for two years that sometimes things just get in the way. And although, you know, it's, it's a tough, and every school in the state is going through the same, every, shouldn't say that, every town in the state is going through a similar type of thing where there's multiple towns, where there's multiple towns that are going through overrides. And I, I think that we need to do our homework, what can, what quantifies as we're not offering our students the best. Because I don't know that we have to offer everything to be the best. I think we have to offer good education to be the best.
Anybody? Lindsay, you are next. Name and address, please.
Sure. Am I close enough to the microphone?
Yes.
That's good, okay. So I'm Lindsay Banks. I'm at 40 Forest Street in Manchester. So I wanted to say, thank you so much for letting me speak today, not as an Essex resident, but as a Manchester resident. The members of the Essex Finance Committee already heard me speak during public comment at their meeting last night. And the decision that you make today, I want to emphasize, is absolutely critical as the school district has made it clear that there is no fat to cut. I am a Manchester resident and I'm here because I care about maintaining our regional partnership. However, I've done a lot of work in the community on this and talked to a lot of people. And as this issue is decided by voters at town meeting, not And as this issue is decided by voters at town meeting, not necessarily the Board of Selectmen, it would be important for you to hear what Manchester voters are saying. Manchester voters are frustrated. There is talk that Essex and Manchester have fundamentally different values, which I do not personally think is the case, but this thought process can have grave consequences for any partnership. There is even speculation in town about who Manchester could regionalize with other than Essex. The no vote on the override and the rhetoric around it in meetings and on social media have, in what I've seen, damaged the partnership between our towns. Just last week, I asked the finance committee to consider how their actions can repair our partnership. In the comments after I spoke, one of the members again mentioned Manchester wants a private school education, or I'm hearing the best schools. This is what I mean when I talk about language that can be divisive. So I want to be clear. I'm a Manchester resident, and I do not want a private school education for my children. I'm a public school teacher, and I believe strongly in a public school education. And when you speak about Manchester in broad strokes like that, you're invoking stereotypes, and that is divisive. People that I know in Manchester who attend the public schools scoff at the suggestion that they want private schools. They're advocating for a public school education on par with other schools in our region. An example is the phased elimination of the French program, which was on the chopping block for the cut after the override failed. The offering of only language, one language that would put Manchester Essex student at a disadvantage relative to other districts. The analysis of course offerings also is inaccurate, as small class sizes reflect the nuances of managing a school that noneducators would know nothing about. Two examples are, one, state mandated special education requirements that can't be just gleaned from the document, and two, courses versus sections, and the difference between the two. So the rhetoric is not only divisive, but incorrect. The people who are paying for that divisive rhetoric are, in fact, young people. They're the students at the school who have to face each other in this divisive culture every single day. I have heard people in Manchester say, Essex doesn't seem to care about education. When I hear that, I correct them, and I say, that's not true of all Essex residents. That's a stereotype. I do my part to debunk the stereotypes, and I call on you to do the same, rather than perpetuate. I would encourage you to consider how your words and actions can help repair the partnerships between the towns. One important way to do that is to agree, and it sounds like you're on that path, so that's fantastic, to a mediation or facilitation, or whatever you want to call it, asking that the district is asking for, is the contingency to the budget, and agree to the spirit of that mediation, not just the mediation itself. You also should know that there is talk in Manchester of voting against a compromise budget, if that passes. If you have not already, I'm sure you have, I would urge you to think about what that might mean for Essex, for the district, and the teachers and children within the district who are living with the consequences of this budget crisis every single day. A more straightforward way to repair the relationship is to find a way to fund the schools. Given that the district has used their reserves for the past four years to cover costs for Essex, it is clearly time that Essex step up to cover their fair share. Past Essex town leaders have acknowledged this. Enrollment numbers have swung towards Essex, and Essex is sending more students. Manchester paid their share when enrollment numbers were higher, even though the override did not pass. That does not mean that Essex should not hold up their end of the bargain. Mr. Pippin is already thinking about these solutions, like how to make it work for Essex. In summary, my comments are about repairing the regional partnership in the short and long term, whatever it takes. This is in the best interest of both of our communities, and I want to see this district partnership remain strong for our children and for our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lindsay. Just as, you know, one of the things that I've heard time and time again is Essex is sending more students to the district, and that is a true statement, but for clarification purposes, I think it's important to note that Essex is sending 13 more students to the district, but Manchester has removed 80 students. So that creates quite the large swing, which shifts the apportionment. And I think that's important to note, only because people keep hearing, well, Essex is sending so many more students. 13 students is not really a lot of students to the district, when we've lost 300 over the course of, you know, the last 10 years. It's just that when the one town dropped by 80 students, it really shifts that apportionment quite drastically. So just that. And then a second point, Lindsay, because you did mention that you're hearing a lot of conversations in Manchester about wanting the same budget, and, you know, looking for another partner, and so on and so forth. Interestingly enough, I've actually heard from Manchester residents myself, who have said, thank you for saying something about the school budget, because we're afraid to speak up. So there are people on both sides in either town. It's not just Essex not able to afford the bill, or not willing, or not valuing education. There are people in both communities that have some of the same concerns. Anybody else with public comment? Anna Lynn. Name and address, please. And Anna Lynn, you have to speak three or four inches away from the microphone to pick up.
Anna Lynn Mitchell, to Bryce Lane. I wasn't prepared to come here to do a public statement, so just bear with me while I talk through my thoughts. As a new school committee member that just joined last year, I've been taking my time to really understand the situation, the tension, and how, like you mentioned, how did we get here? And I don't think anybody can pinpoint, like you said, we, I don't think we can pinpoint exactly how things goes around, but we are where we are today, and right now, all we can do is just the best path forward. But I do want to highlight that it's not just about the numbers, and this is coming from a CFO. Like, is, I do see that this is not just about the numbers. It's not just only about, you know, Essex, you guys mentioned about, you know, your apportionment, or, you know, the tax rate and whatnot, or Manchester's side, you know, whatever that might be, or even the district, that, you know, we are looking at the budget, however that might be. To me, this is just beyond the numbers. Numbers will help to clarify, lay everything on the table. But I do think it's the relationship and the trust, and that we all need to build back up. It's going to be, it's going to take more than the facilitated mediation for us to talk through the budget process. It's going to be more than that, and it has to be everybody's effort. And it breaks my heart to see that, you know, both towns, and we, my kids, I have three kids, in the school system, and they have Essex friends too. So it's not about Essex, it's about Manchester. We all play together. And it breaks my heart to see the residents so divided, not just that both towns, but even within the same town, we are completely divided. And right now is so chaotic. That being said, like you mentioned, we are not the only district that have override issues. But I just feel like we can do better. And let's make sure that we move forward, that's, make sure that the three entities really work together, and then really, the bygones be bygone, and then make sure that we just really come together. And it's, at this time of age, that we all want the best for our children. We all want the best programs that we can afford, or not afford, that we all want the best. And so I do think that at the end of the day, we all want the same things, and we just need to be nice to each other, and then really try to find a way forward.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you, Anna Lynn.
I just want to clean out, I just learned that with online, sorry, I just learned that with online participants, we have a quorum, so we need school committee members to stop speaking.
Oh, you're not posted? Okay.
No.
Thank you. Sorry, I actually knew Erica was on. I wasn't counting or paying attention, my apologies. Anybody else that would like to make public comment in the room? Okay, I'm going to go back to the phone. Is there anybody online or dialed in that would like to make public comment? Jody?
Just a couple of things. I'm listening, and I'm hearing, you know, not just this year, next year, we have problems. I asked Jeff Sular to prepare what Essex...
Hang on one second for me, Jody. Joan? Do you, we're getting some reverb here. Is there something going on over there?
If she turns down the gain, and Jody, you come closer. Jody, you come closer to the mic, and she'll turn down the gain. Even closer.
Try again.
Is it, is it better?
You're better.
Okay, perfect. So I spoke with Jeff Sular this afternoon, because, again, I look at what Essex had to fund, the lift that Essex had this year to meet the school budget. And it was $741,000. And I look at our two and a half percent, prop two and a half percent levy limit, and it was $339,000. So that's not just for the school, it's for the town budget as well. Essex continues to struggle with where we find additional revenue. Some additional revenue comes from new growth, but new growth isn't anything guaranteed, and Jeff and I had a bit of a discussion about that. So if we're lucky, we get in the ballpark of maybe $100,000. So that brings us to the 439 mark. So if you put, this is a math equation, right? You put that $439,000 on the table, and you need to fund 741,000 for the school. I'm in a unique position, because I'm the chair of the Economic Development Committee. So we're looking at, how do we increase revenue at the same time as we're trying to, you know, we're scrambling to find revenue, which isn't easy. We are, in Essex. So we're sort of limited to the capacity of town services, and our limited sewer connections, and the little bit of zoning we have. So as the zoning project spills, you know, spins out and gets some traction, we're hoping to have some better zoning, so that we can increase some of our revenue opportunities. But that takes time. So it won't happen this year or next year. It might take five years. But it is an amazing sight when you're looking at what the numbers are that you're working with, the small numbers that you're working with in such a tiny town. So we've done it before, we're going to get there again. I know we will work collaboratively to make the school district work, because we did it. We did it 23 years ago. We'll do it again today. We may think we have differences of opinion. At the end of the day, I don't think we really do. I think we, I think we will get there. But we need to approach the math problem first, and then identify how we deal with the math problem, and we retrofit what we can do, what Essex can do, with less means than Manchester. Listening to the Manchester people at their joint meeting reminded me that, of why they wanted a region, because we were happily paying $10,000, $15,000 a student, not even in tuition agreements, and now we're paying a lot more than that. But Manchester said in this joint meeting that they didn't want to jeopardize the region, that it was important that we keep the region strong, and I think this is why they supported the compromise budget, because prior to regionalization, and I didn't know this number, that they were spending 75% of their total budget on schools, and now they're spending 50% of their budget on schools. So they were standing up their own school district from K to 12, and that's a heavy lift. Nobody wants to do that. And they don't want to do that again. And we actually, in the beginning, when we were forming the region, we spoke to Rockport, and Rockport had just built their new school, and they came in at the tail end, and we weren't interested, or they weren't interested. We had gotten to an agreement with Manchester, and I think we made the right choice. I still think we made the right choice. I believe in the district. I also believe the numbers, and so we have to figure out how to work with those numbers. But at the, at the end of the day, I think there isn't a person who doesn't agree that the school district is, is an important institution that we need to support and continue. We may just have to do that in a little bit different, a different way. That is my two cents on the numbers.
Thank you. Is there anybody else with public comment? Christopher Wolf. Name and address.
Christopher Wolf, 4 Saginaw Creek Road. Thank you. So Proposition 2 and 1/2 is our math problem, the way I look at it. And Proposition 2 and 1/2, while mass state law, is not a law of nature. It is an arbitrary number that a tax, anti-tax advocacy group managed to get enacted through a lot of states in our country 30 years ago. It has been well communicated to both towns what the budgetary needs of the school committee and the school district, I should say, have been and were projected to be. And our challenge is, we have not risen to the occasion to fund that. You will be shocked to learn that I was the one finance committee member who wanted, who didn't support the compromise budget, because I think we can do better, and I hope we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Last call for public comment. I'll go back to the phone. Nope, hearing no public comment. Any public comment in the room before I close down public comment? No. So for the board, we have now taken public comment. We lean on our finance committee as our finance professionals. They are the Board of Selectmen's advisory board. We have options before us, which is to accept the recommendation of the finance committee, which is the compromise budget, six to one vote. We can go back, as Selectman Pippin has suggested, with a full budget, no cuts. We can make a different recommendation, just like, you know, just like everything's still on the table. So, Alva, I mean, I'm not exactly sure where you were. I don't know if you, if we want to do it as a straw poll, and then I'll take a motion. I don't know if you...
I'm...
Or Peter, do you want to make a motion?
A clarification, are we, is this vote on turf fields? Is that...
No, this is, oh. The turf fields can't come into this conversation unless we're going to, if that wants to come into this conversation, then we're talking about a $689,400 override.
Right.
Which is why we left it out of the conversation, because we didn't think that would pass. I mean, we couldn't pass a $289,000 override. I don't see us passing a $689,000 override.
That's right. So I just wanted to clarify that it was not part of the discussion.
No, the recommendation of the finance committee is that we accept the recommendation of a compromise budget without the two contingencies. I'm happy with that. I know that you supported a no-cuts budget, and Alva, I wasn't sure where you were at, so I...
No, I'm under the recommendation of the...
Of the finance committee. So...
I am, I am as well, in the interest of solidarity.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Essex Finance Committee to present to the school committee the compromise budget as, well, not support, that the school committee vote on a compromise budget. But there was more words from Manchester. Exactly how did they put it? The Board of Selectmen, I will entertain a motion to make a recommendation to the school committee that the Board of Selectmen supports the compromise budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alva?
Aye.
Being 7:50 PM, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to jump on that one.
You would think this was our first meeting.